I know that when...
We think, I think we should do this. Yeah, it's a great idea. You're gonna be ahead of us.
I thought of that today. They were all talking about five-year plans and stuff. I thought if they get on the council, they need to head up the committee and solve the five...
Do a fall year plan.
I'd like to call the Moll Mel City Council meeting to order. I need to let you know tonight that Councilmember Williams will not be with us tonight. She's out of town. And City Clerk Timmons will not be here tonight also. So Deputy City Clerk Amanda Smith is assuming her duties tonight. So with that, we'll move on to the next item, invocation and pledge of allegiance. I've asked Councilmember Vapurzan to lead us in that tonight.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we love you and come to you tonight thanking you for your goodness to us and for the many things that you provide for us each and every day that we're not even sometimes aware of. Help us to live grateful, thankful lives, Lord. Our thoughts and prayers are with those on the East Coast, in the Carolinas, and suffering now tornadoes coming up and the flooding and all that's going on. There are so many people displaced and suffering through the inclement weather and the hurricane. And God, I pray that you would bless them and provide for them. Help us to help them in any way that we might possibly be able to. May we continue to uplift them in our prayers. We do pray for our uniformed personnel as well as our military here and abroad for their safety as they have pledged their lives to protect our freedoms. Thank you for this room this evening. We ask that our conversation please you and as we do the work of this wonderful city. And thank you again for all you've provided for us through your son, Jesus. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item is special guests and announcements, and we don't have an item listed here because we're trying to keep it a surprise, but we are actually going to give out a President's Volunteer Service Award tonight. And so at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Lawanda Simmons to come forward.[152.56][152.56](Laughter)
Surprise!
It has nothing to do with tricking you.
Good news, man.
Come on up here, Lawanda. All right. So Lawanda Simmons has been awarded a gold-level President's Volunteer Service Award for her work on behalf of Counting on Each Other in the Department of Senior Services for serving in excess of 600 volunteer hours in the past 12 months. Lawanda leads a group of volunteers who tirelessly seek donations, transport, sort, and price items to be sold to raise funds for seniors in the Moll Mel area at Find a Treasure Run itself. So Lawanda, I'd like you to place this.
Yay!
And hang on, we've got an award to give out, and I'm gonna have to get my glasses for this. And we've got a letter from the President also. All right. So the award says, the President's Volunteer Service Award. The President's Volunteer Service Award is presented to Lawanda Simmons Gold by the Corporation for National and Community Service in recognition and appreciation for their commitment to strengthen our nation and communities through volunteer service, awarded 2018 by the Corporation for National and Community Service and the Points of Light. So there's that. And then this is from the White House, Washington. Congratulations on receiving the President's Volunteer Service Award. On behalf of a grateful nation, I thank you for your service to your fellow Americans and those most in need. To your dedicated service, you have ensured the continuation of America's unparalleled commitment to improving the life of others. Over the past year, you have served as a model of the American spirit. Your many hours of service have strengthened the bonds of cooperation and trust that bring people together while helping to address some of the greatest challenges of our time. One of our nation's greatest strengths remains the compassion of our everyday citizens who give so willingly of themselves and their lives for the benefits of others. Each generation of hard-working, kind-hearted volunteers helped to write a new chapter of American greatness, and our nation is proud for your commitment to this honorable tradition. As we reflect on your many acts of kindness and charity over this past year, our nation draws inspiration from those who answered the call to help their communities and our nation. With your continued efforts to build on our nation's culture of service, America will proudly remain a land of freedom and opportunity for all. Thank you for the enduring commitment to serving your community and our nation. I trust that you will continue to work for the betterment of others and an even stronger future for the American people. In his son, Donald Trump.
Surprise!
And you don't have to speak now.
Why?[351.02][351.02](Laughter) You don't have to say one thing.
I was serious. No, no, I don't. And he said, "Well, you're going to."
Well, now you've got 601 hours of volunteer service.
And what they told her she was gonna talk about was the shredded event that's coming up this weekend from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So at Bank of the Ozarks parking lot. So that's their semi-annual, I think y'all do it twice a year, the shredded event, which raises money for Counting on Each Other. So congratulations, Lawanda, and it's a very prestigious award to win, so...
Well, I'm going to Washington Thursday, and I'll stop by and thank you.[398.46][398.46](Laughter)
Well, I just show that at the front door and say, "Hey, I wanna meet the guy," you know.
That doesn't know how that works out.
All right. Next item is approval of the minutes from the September 4th regular meeting. And y'all, if y'all, y'all can stay if you want to, but you don't have to. You're not required to. All right. Approval of the minutes from September the 4th regular meeting. You have a copy of those minutes in your packets.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all of them in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. I have no public comment cards tonight on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. Next item is the financial statement review. Ms. Vega's here tonight to do the financial report.
Good evening. So these financial statements are for the month of August.
Should have a...
Yeah, there's the PowerPoint. There you go. All right. So we have a healthy fund balance in all our funds. Sanitation is up 9% compared to budget. Street is up 6% compared to budget, and the general fund is up 7% compared to budget. And we have $2 million over the ordinance 438 requirement. Next slide. Okay. This is the general fund revenue, and the state turnback is up 10%. The county village tax is up 5%. County sales tax is up 1%. This is, sorry, this is all over prior year. Franchise fee is up 2%. Community service fee is down 9%. Building impairments is up 9%. Parks is down 9%, and senior services is up 30%. Next, we're looking at the street fund. State turnback is down 5%. State aid, street aid is up 7%, and county village is up 3%. The sanitation fund is down 14%. Soon to be rising. Okay. This is our general fund expenditures, and I've been asked to, or y'all have asked a bunch of questions about compared to budget and why we're so down on budget, and I have that information too. First, I'm gonna go through and tell you where we stand over prior year, and then I'll talk about the budget side. So admin is up 13% over prior year, and this is due to the HR director position and my position being filled at the beginning of the year in the full year. Last year, we did not have a full year. The police are up due to salary increases. Fire is also up due to fire increases. Police is up 5%, and fire is up 7%. Parks are down 13%. They're understaffed. Seniors are up 39% due to the new facility. Now, on the budget side, I'm just gonna talk about the big ones. So if you look at the police, 86, okay, compared to budget, they are 208,000 below budget. 86% of that is attributable to payroll, and that's due to open positions. The other part of it, utilities was 13,000 variance, and as you know, that can change. If we have a hard winter, then our utility savings will go away. For fire, fire is under budget $184,000, and 70% of that is payroll due to open positions. And the other part, 30%, 10,000 is utilities, 10,000 is contract services, sorry, and materials and supplies is under budget 37,000. Are there any questions? I didn't really talk about admin. Admin, recruiting is under budget 13,000. Repairs, under 5,000. Bank fees are under 10,000, and salaries are down 30,000, and supplies were under 13,000. Travel were under 10,000, and contract services 12,000. Now, in speaking to that, I know that the travel and seminars and that kinda stuff, like Tina's out for a week. Next week, I'm out for a week. So, you know, our travel time is not reflected in the, when you're looking at the budget, 'cause the budget is just, like this, right now, the budget is 8/12 of the total budget. Okay? The next slide shows our spending, just in a different type chart, and you can see that the bulk of our spending is on community safety. The next one shows where we are spending our budget compared to the total budget. So this time, by doing the 8/12, we should be at 70% of spending under that type of analysis, and all the departments are under 7, 70%. For streets. When you look at the other operating and you see that we're under prior year, we're really actually flat to prior year because in 2017, we were waiting on a $200,000 reimbursement check for design services, and right now, we're waiting on a $58,000 reimbursement. Sanitation, they're down due to payroll, understaffing. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Overall, where do you like to see us year-to-date on our revenue for the city? Where, what was your estimate?
I think that we're gonna be coming in right at budget, potentially over budget.
So you think 3% more, 6%?
I'll have to look, I'll have to look into that. I don't wanna throw out a number without looking at it.
Yeah, I was just thinking averages, not a hard number.
Yeah.
It just seems, over the last few reports that we got, that we're, our revenues have been up, and I know there's some people that think that our revenue is flat, and I really am not seeing that, that trend, but I'm also not an accountant, so I'd like...
Well, part of, part of the reason I would think that people would say it's flat is because our large revenue is flat. Like county sales tax and the general fund, it's up 1%. And if you look at city sales tax, it's up 17%. Now, that, that is a more significant number. And I believe that... Well, this doesn't include the new sales tax.
Yeah.
So...
But there might be a mistake when it comes to, oh, what, the...
Reinstilling?
Well, there may be a rebate that has to be given, that somebody could apply for us, like we ran into that one time, but it's not showing up that that's happening, but yeah.
Yeah, we are not expecting that, but we have no control over that.
And then on the other note, it looks like our expenses are down over the last few times that we've reported, and we're not hitting that 70% mark that you were talking about across the board.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm wondering if maybe we, we budgeted a little more aggressive on expenditures and that there's more, gonna be more wiggle room at the end of that? Or is it just because we're only looking at 8 of 12?
So if you look at payroll, payroll should be very tight...
Yeah.
...to budget.
Yeah.
Because we budget by the exact positions and the exact amount that we expect to use anyone in a certain position. So for instance, the city attorney budgeted for a 30-hour work week. Well, she's only working 20-hour work weeks, but when things are really busy, she works more hours. And so there, you're gonna have a variance. Parks has had a real tough time getting people in positions. They hire and then somebody quits, you know, and they're, they're struggling to have a full staff. The same with Public Works as well.
Well, and I understand that, 'cause it, you know, there's so much variance. I just, I'm more interested in like an average across the board where, where we're looking at, you know, 'cause we're gonna be coming into budgets, you know?
Yeah, and there are some areas that we may have savings, but I, like, for instance, HVAC maintenance contract, we are very under budget there. I attribute that to new agreements that we've gotten because Tina's aggressively tried to get, well, not just Tina, fire too. Everybody's tried to get the least best contract that they can get. But I think it's been better managed this year.
Good. Well, I like the way it looks, and so I just wanted to see if there was any more concrete than just my good feeling, you know? Thank you.
Excuse me. Councilmember Vapurzan?
Quick question. What's our minimum fund balance requirement? Do you know?
It's 2.5.
Okay, 'cause I thought you said...
2.6, really.
You were 2 million over?
Yeah, we have 2 million in excess funds over that, that requirement.
So when you, the number, so 4.6 is what you're saying is what we, so where, because I, when I look at cash assets under general fund, it's a 7.2, so I was...
So part of that is encumbered, and I'm working on that because the...
It just hasn't been spent, or, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If it's, if, if a line item's encumbered, that means that we have POs out there.
It's assigned?
Yes. We have started working on going through that number because the 1.6 is not accurate.
Okay.
It hasn't been accurate since 2008. And so I've talked to the mayor about it, and we're, and we're looking at potentially making changes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holt?
Quick question about 2 million that's over minimum required. Isn't that a little bit lower than it has been in the past? I mean, it, it, have we had a balance in excess of that previously, or, I don't know, a date, just, you know, in the last several months or last year or whatever?
Yes, it has been higher than that. I don't know that it's been higher than 200,000 compared to that, but I'd have to look at prior months.
I thought we had like 3, 4 million.
No, we've never had that. It's always been around 2 million. I don't know if we ever got up to 2.5.
There's not any other questions. I entertain a motion to approve the...
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the financials for August 2018. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all of them in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is department reports, and those are done at the first meeting of each month. And I know that Councilmember Scott had asked for a report from Mr. Hogan, but we, because of the presentation, some other things, I asked him to delay that till the next meeting. If that's a... Okay, okay. All right, thank you. I wasn't 100% sure, but yeah, okay. All right. Next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight.
Second.
Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all of them in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. We have the third reading of ordinance number 960, accepting dedication of streets and drainage. Ms. Smith, if you'd read that by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Moll Mel, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 960, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage in Carnahan Village subdivision upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we accept ordinance 960.
We have a motion and a second to accept ordinance number 960. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please. You don't have to turn that on. It's not your microphone.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Williams isn't here. Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Vapurzan?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is the second reading of ordinance number 961, as amended, establishing speed limits. Ms. Smith, if you'll read that by title only, please.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Moll Mel, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 961, an ordinance declaring speed limit in residential rear access alleys.
Okay, the, the speed study is actually in the FYI's, I think is where it's at, that was given to you in, but we did a speed study for a week, and to be honest with you, I don't see a speeding problem there. I drove through there twice, and you cannot drive less than 12 miles an hour. My speedometer is a digital speedometer, and I just let off the accelerator as I go into the alley, and I'm doing 12 miles an hour, going one direction for sure, 'cause it's downhill. Now uphill, you give a little bit of gas, but if you're going less than 12 miles an hour, you feel like somebody could outwalk you, is the problem. But the, the speed study actually showed that there was 140 vehicles that used that alleyway in the week that we did it, and five of them were going 1 to 5. I don't know how that's possible. And then six, 48 of them were going 6 to 10 miles an hour, 62 of them were going 11 to 15, and 24 were going 16 to 20. And then there was one that was going between 21 and 25 miles an hour. Now, when I say that, I'm not saying we do, that this has anything to do with the ordinance. I'm just saying that there does not appear to be a speeding problem in that alley. Even if, even if you give them a five-mile tolerance, I mean, there was only 24 cars that were going somewhere between 16 and 20, well, they could've been doing 16, you know, instead of 20. So, so the, the, the speed study and it, the crazy thing is, is it has a lane one and a lane two, but look at the combined is what you need to look at. The lane one and lane two just simply determines which direction they're going, whether, which tube it hits first. That's just the way it's set up to do a two-way street, basically not a one-way alley or a one-lane alley. So, but basically, this said enforcement would be, you know, one way it was 23%, but that's over 15 miles an hour. We set the limit at anything over 15 miles, or 16 and above, but then the other way, it was 13.2, and I think it's the part where going downhill, I mean, basically, you could just, you would coast over 12 miles an hour, and if somebody was giving it any acceleration at all as they went over the hill, they would be doing 16, easy. So I don't think there's a speeding problem. There may have been the incident with the one person that was speeding through the neighborhood or something like that, but during the week we did it, there didn't indicate to be a speeding problem there. But I'm, but I'm not saying that this ordinance isn't needed simply because we don't have a speed limit set for rear residential alleyways currently. So they could do 35, or, actually, I think it's 25. If it says it's not marked, it's 25, but, but I don't think 25 is a speed that somebody should be going down those alleyways. There's too many driveways. So, and I put it in the location after consulting with Councilmember Holt that they felt like the speeding problem was occurring in. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. I was wondering if Councilmember Holt or the mayor could tell us, are there other public alleyways in, in Moll Mel?
Not that are...
I don't, let me think. I don't think there's any public alleyways, other public alleyways.
So this would just be applying strictly to Yard and Oaks then if we passed it the way it is now?
Right.
As well as any future alleys?
Yeah.
That would be created and dedicated?
Well, yeah. Now, I guess the, the statement in there, public streets, we, we require everything to be built to our standards, so, yeah, but it wouldn't be a, an alleyway that we maintain or that we would do anything on, I guess. It'd be private property otherwise.
But what's your thoughts, Mr. Mayor, on this ordinance?
Well, and I'll tell you, I'm, I'm part of the reason the ordinance is here. Councilmember Holt came to me and said he wanted us to put up speed limit signs on those alleyways. Well, there was not a, in my mind, there wasn't a speed limit on that alleyway, so what speed limit did I put on those signs? So that's why I said, "Well, let's get with the city attorney and request that this be drafted." And so, you know, I do think we need this because if anybody ever wants to put up a speed limit sign there, you couldn't, I guess you'd have to list 25 right now to say, "If it's not otherwise posted, it's 25 miles an hour." Now, how does that work? I don't know. That's the weird thing to me. If you read our regs, it says if it's not otherwise posted, the speed limit's 25. So that would be the, the speed limit there if you didn't post something. But if you post something, what speed limit do you post, you know, there? So that was kinda, I was asking for the guidance of what do I put on the signs when I looked at the code? And, you know, and I know the first meeting, I wasn't here when y'all discussed this, it was, "Well, how many signs are we gonna put up?" I'd never really intended to put up any signs. We're just gonna put on the pavement, speed limit, this amount, and I think there's only six locations it would have to be done. And I think there's only six locations it would have to be done, and you've covered every entry into that, uh, uh, alleyways.
Okay. So, you'd like to do this?
Well, I didn't wanna put, I didn't necessarily wanna put the speed limit signs up, but I do, I, I needed something for, in a, in a code that allowed me to put a speed limit sign up if we chose to do that.
Alrighty. Thank you.
I couldn't just put a sign up and make up a speed limit, I didn't think. Is there any more discussion on ordinance number nine sixty-one? If not, it'll be on third reading at the next meeting.
Um, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Scott?
You said that you can't even go under twelve, over twelve miles an hour, yet the ordinance reads that the speed limit would be ten. So, what do we do about that?
Well, I, I just said, for me, it's hard for me to drive ten miles an hour. But, I mean, we always do some kind of tolerance. I mean, are, are we, we have trained police officers. I mean, I would say let them do their job and let them make the determination. Even if the speed limit is ten, if they chose not to write someone a ticket at nineteen miles an hour, I'm fine with that as long as they use it there in their judgment. Now, if there's twelve cars parked along the alleyway and someone goes through there at nineteen miles an hour, then maybe they need to write a ticket or something like that, or if there's children present or something like that. But they might choose to write unsafe driving or something like that.
Right, there are two other options that come with that according to the chief.
Yeah, 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 right.
Okay. I was just thinking that we're putting something in there that's, uh, very, very difficult to...
Well, we do have that speed limit in our parks, so, ten miles an hour. But it, it's, I mean, it is hard to drive ten miles an hour. You gotta basically almost ride your brake, you know, when you're going ten miles an hour. But, I mean, I definitely do it when there's children present. So, if I see children out...
Okay, thank you.
So, I guess I just admitted the speeding on an alleyway, but... Chief will have me a ticket, wait.
There's no speed limit.
Oh, okay, I'm good.
You're good right now. Can't speed in that alley. Good right now.
Admitted the speeding higher than our proposed speed limit. Alright, any other discussion on ordinance number nine sixty-one? Okay, um... Next item is under new business. We have resolution number two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-nine. Ms. Smith, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Marmell, Pulaski County, Arkansas. Resolution number twenty eighteen twenty-nine. A resolution to amend the two thousand and eighteen Marmell Street Fund budget.
Thank you. Alright, I included a very detailed list of numbers that Jack prepared for everybody. Uh, and what I also need to tell you is back in Feb, free money's not free. I mean, I've said that before. When we get federal money, back in two thousand and sixteen in February, the council approved up to forty-one thousand dollars, forty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars toward these sidewalks. Now, it wasn't a budget amendment. It was a willingness to utilize federal aid transportation alternative program funds. And so, at the time, we were asking for two hundred and seven thousand, a hundred and forty-six dollars to do the Edgewood Drive sidewalks. And with that amount of money for a project, our match, our twenty percent match would have been forty-one thousand dollars. But when we actually got our grant the first time, they gave us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, that's the number at the top of the memo. So, they gave us, instead of giving us two hundred and seven thousand dollars, we actually had a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars because you had the amount they're giving plus the twenty, twenty percent match. But shortly after that was awarded, Metro Plan came out with another grant. And it was trying to, same, same type of grant, a tip or tap grant, uh, that allowed you to, a tap grant that allowed you to use for, uh, safe routes to schools projects. And so, that's what our first project was, so we applied for that grant. And they gave us thirty-two thousand dollars, but we have to match that eight percent. So, then we were up to a total of forty thousand dollar, or no, excuse me, we're up to thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in our match, basically with the Metro Plan grant and the highway department's grant that we got. So, we had a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars with the grant and our match money to build a project. So, we took bids. The lowest bid came in at two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So, close to what our original estimate was two years ago, but still a little high. So, we negotiated the price down so we can get the sidewalks built for two hundred thousand dollars. But our total amount of grant funds in Marmell matches one ninety-six. So, now we need an additional thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars in order to do the project. So, what we, the total that we need for everything is forty-three thousand dollars. But the, the council in two thousand and sixteen committed forty-one thousand, four hundred dollars. So, basically, we're asking for sixteen hundred dollars above what we asked for. Now, with that, we get a hundred, uh, no, let's see, one twenty-five and thirty-two. We get a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in federal funds. So, I know that's a long laid-out thing, and appreciate Jack putting numbers together, and he pulled all the documents, and he's, he can answer questions too if you've got any for him. But this has been just one of those projects that, you know, due to the funds involved in it and needing additional monies after we got the first grant, in order to complete the project, uh, it's just drug out longer than we hoped for. Any questions?
I make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-nine.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, second to adopt resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-nine. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, Jack, go get it built now.
Yeah.
Now, we, they're actually, we, we had to know something pretty quick because the federal year ends September thirtieth. And so, that was, we're, we're getting this thing under the, under the deadline to get the money for this year from the feds. So, uh, Casey was calling Friday going, what are y'all doing on this project? And I said, I'll let you know on Tuesday. So, uh, appreciate that very much. Uh, next item is Bash on the Boulevard recap. Uh, actually, uh, we, we had the makings of a really good, uh, day out at Bash on the Boulevard. Uh, a little warmer than I would have actually wanted it to be for a while, a little steamy. And then it came a nice rain shire and cooled things down after the steaminess left again. And then, uh, uh, close to five o'clock, I guess, we had lightning in the area, and so they made the decision to cancel Bash on the Boulevard for the rest of the evening. And then it just slow, a slow rain kinda moved in and rained for several hours. But, uh, uh, they were, uh, the, the musical act, uh, didn't get to appear, but we had a lot of businesses out there and, uh, food trucks and everything. And a few people had actually canceled the day before just based on the forecast, meaning the food vendors and some things like that because they didn't want to prepare food and then lose it. But, uh, the plans are, is that, uh, the chamber's gonna do it again next year. And, uh, they even, uh, the band, I think, they're still gonna get the same band to come back, maybe at a reduced rate or something like that because they, they missed out on this year's. And it's, uh, some Marmell residents that were in that band, uh, and they really wanted to perform. So, uh, that's, uh, it. But we had, like I say, we had a large attendance there and had a lot of, uh, businesses and a lot of politicians out there, so, uh... Next item, Amazon Project in North Rock. Uh, Steve Mosley had asked that I speak on the Amazon project. Did they contact us? Well, we don't know. We get a lot of inquiries by real estate companies, and they'll say, do you have this much land available? Do you have a forty-acre site that, or do you have a two hundred thousand square foot building? Or do you have this? They don't tell us what the projects are. Uh, they just make inquiries. Or if we get a site selection that comes in, they may call it Project Zero, or they may call it Project Razorback. We still don't know. I mean, we didn't know it was Dillard's looking out here until we had to actually go meet with Dillard's at the ADC's office. It was called Project Something, and I don't remember the exact name now. That was in two thousand and eleven. But, uh, they just came in and they said, you know, we're this project, and we need a building this large, and we're gonna put an internet fulfillment center in there. But they don't tell you who they are. And so, we haven't had anybody that said they're gonna do an internet fulfillment center, but we have had several inquiries on even the brown property that's out on the interstate out there behind the McDonald's and all, where we don't have sewer currently. Uh, we had some people inquiring about that property this summer, actually. So, could have been Amazon, but they don't ever come back and tell you that you didn't make it or you did. Uh, but the thing about the Amazon project is, you know, that's basically gonna be a tent that they're putting up right now. It's not even gonna be a building they're gonna wreck. So, they're gonna have three modular buildings and a tent. Uh, it's kind of a prototype or, uh, pilot program. And then, next year, they may move into a full-scale building, or they may build their own project or something like that. It's right on Interstate thirty, just north of, um, I believe it's called Shorter Gardens. So, if you're leaving Little Rock, driving on I-30, the last buildings on your right before you get to I-40, you know, you go around the curve if you wanna go to McCain Mall. The last buildings, well, they've already, they've gone in now and done dirtwork on that site. It was the lay-down area for the North Rock High School. Well, they built the high school. That's where they assembled all their material, and they built, uh, parts of things there, metal and things like that, and then trucked them over to the North Rock High School. So, the site was already cleared.
Wasn't that a school a long time ago, that area?
Uh, there's a school in that area. The school's still there. But this was a vacant piece of ground. Yeah. But, uh, so, to be honest with you, Steve, I don't know if they contacted us or not. But they didn't let us know it was Amazon if they did. And that's typically how it works. That, I mean, like I say, Dillard's didn't tell us who they were, uh, you know, uh, the, I mean, every project we've ever worked on, they don't tell you who they are till you get, make the shortlist, and you get down to negotiating on pricing and all that stuff. And then you have to sign a, uh, confidentiality agreement. So, you can't even release who it is. So, they, they knew we were gonna know people in the room when Dillard's showed up. So, we had to sign confidentiality agreements before we ever walked in the room, uh, stating that we couldn't discuss anything about it or who we met with. And so, and they do that for several reasons, like i- in, I can't speak to necessarily Dillard's, but, uh, if, if that company's already located somewhere and they're looking to lo, uh, to move a warehouse, change locations, well, they don't want their employees to know because they don't want them to quit. They also don't want their competitors know that they're moving into an area. So, it's, it's for that reason that they, they don't want you to be able to know who they are on the start. And then as it gets closer to it, then they still don't want you to divulge that they're locating there. Wal, Walmart is big about that. If Walmart buys a piece of ground, they don't want people to know it because the price will go up if they know it's Walmart, too. So...
Pepsi did that same thing.
Pepsi, we didn't, we didn't know it was Pepsi. We knew it was a distribution, beverage distribution company. But yeah, but then Pepsi located in the Scholastic Building out here. Took a hundred and twenty thousand square feet and put over a hundred employees out there. So, they consolidated three operations, one in Hot Springs, one in Little Rock, and one somewhere up in North Arkansas, Conway, Russellville, somewhere like that. But they consolidated three operations here. So, that meant their employees had to start coming to Marmell, even if they were reporting to Hot Springs.
Wow.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Alright. And then, uh, Garden Oaks Alley Speed Study, I think we've already talked about that. Unless y'all wanna ask questions on that, we'll move on. Planning Commission Report, uh, will be done after the Planning Commission meeting, and there is no Planning Commission meeting this month. So, you won't get one of those until November. Any City Councilmember comments? Councilmember Vapurzhan?
Quick question, two questions. Just wanted to see city attorney, how court was going here. Um, and then if there were any plans for that building, mayor, what your thoughts were, if you wanna leave it for...
The next...
The next mayor. So, tho, those are my two questions. Thank you.
Uh, with regard to court being held here, I think we're about ready to move downstairs. Um, I think we might actually be down there tomorrow.
Okay.
But it's a bit chaotic. You're, you have two very different uses of the building. Uh, uh, and so, uh, the folks that work here aren't necessarily used to having, say, uh, folks brought in in handcuffs and sitting here. So, it's, it's, uh, been an interesting, uh, experience, to say the least. Uh, and we're excited to get downstairs.
Okay, good.
And the very last court session lasted until eight-thirty. So, we still had people roaming around the building as we're trying to leave, you know, uh, because they, they invoked the rule, which means that the witnesses couldn't be in this room. So, they were everywhere. They were outside, they were in our blue room and everything else. So, so there's, there were some issues with that. But it was just a matter of trying to secure the building with people still in the building. So, now, we, we did have police officers still here that were out in the blue room also. So, that made me feel a little more comfortable of leaving.
Yes.
Uh, and then as far as the other building, uh, I thought about just putting up a sign down there and said, you know, land for sale for inquiries. Uh, but then the question is, uh, what's the price gonna be? I mean, that's gonna be the first question they're gonna ask. So, what I'd recommend is we go, look forward to, uh, look at getting an appraisal done. So, what I thought about doing is going ahead and getting some prices to do an appraisal, and then that, bringing that back to the council. That way, whether it's me or the next mayor, they've got some information that they can use, uh, for pricing the land, so...
Okay.
And then I'm gonna have to also ask some people to get some stuff out of there, you know. But yeah, there's, we were using it for storage still, and I think courts has still got some stuff there, but the engine bay's got some stuff in it, too.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Councilmember Scott?
Um, Bash on the Boulevard, uh, there were photos in Sunday's paper for people who didn't get to see that. You know, that was pretty neat. Even though it didn't say anything about what it was, it just said Bash on the Boulevard, Marmell.
Okay.
But at least we got some recognition in it, in the Gazette, so I appreciated that. And also, uh, we've got the great Marmell, Arkansas cleanup on the twenty-second between nine and twelve. Uh, we have not had a lot of people sign up, I would say twenty. But there's been a lot of interest on internet. You know, people have posted going or interested or something like that. So, we're going to just send out some, uh, words that say, everybody who's interested in helping meet at the new pavilion in the park at nine o'clock on Saturday. We'll break up into teams. Um, I've, I've actually only had two people volunteer as team leads as well. So, uh, we'll probably have to appoint some team leads. But, uh, we were sent about thirty T-shirts, some vests, some gloves. But all we're asking the public to do is bring, um, appropriate, just to wear appropriate clothes. If they're gonna be in tall grass or something, they might wanna wear long pants, uh, tennis shoes or something. And, uh, to wear gloves because we may not have enough for everybody. But any equipment that's, uh, being used, like for the cleanup, this, outside of this building, uh, will be provided, so we don't have to bring anything like that. So, please come.
They may have been waiting to see what the weather was gonna do.
Yeah, that's possible.
Yeah. It's four hundred degrees outside.
I think it's low eighties, I think is what they're calling for right now, but that could change. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you for clarification. Is it just strictly trash, or are we picking up dead wood, or...
No, uh, we, we're, we know that people will, it's not an opportunity to do the biannual trash pickup or to do additional yard cleanup. There are other mechanisms for doing this. This is just trash. This is just, like the great Arkansas cleanup, we're just, we're just gonna be garbage collectors.
Alright.
Yeah.
Litter.
Litter.
Litter, yeah.
Litter collectors.
Yeah.
Litter collectors. Good word.
Thank you.
Alright, any other City Councilmembers' comments? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, the, um, city has submitted a lawsuit to the Arkansas Municipal League for coverage. It is a lawsuit brought by a former employee, basically alleging that, uh, she was owed overtime. And so, that has been submitted to the municipal league, and they have accepted it for coverage. Just a heads up, and that was all that I had. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, did you have any comments? Did...
No, sir.
Okay, alright.
I want to listen.
We've done all the FYI's, I think. Uh, we mentioned the Shred It event earlier, uh, when, uh, Ms. Simmons was getting her award. But that's also going on Saturday. So, uh, take your Shred It to them and don't dump it out at the lake, so, during the cleanup, so, yeah. Councilmember Scott?
Uh, I just wanted to remind everybody of the Chamber of Commerce's brown bags. They had their first one today, and it was great. Lot of discussion. So, that was, it was a good event. So, and there are more coming up, so...
There's, they're like today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, correct? I think.
Yes, and then that's for the council members, and then the mayors do the following week, I believe.
Okay.
But the schedule's posted on the chamber's website, so please, it's, it's worthwhile.
Alright. If there's no other business to come before the council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Meeting is adjourned.
I thought, yeah, that's why you laughed, you thought it was going to be Vapurzan.
I hadn't noticed that.